Joining us tonight, September 12, 2019, Town Board Work Session. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So usually, I don't have any announcements because the deputy supervisor pays me not to have announcements on the work session. I only have one, though. Apparently, there's been some concern lately with some residents about their tax relief check, the 2018 tax relief check. Some residents actually, it's been stolen out of their mailboxes. So, and I've been asking several other residents about this, and just like myself, I have to ask my wife if we got the check. And, you know, you don't know. You have to go back and take a look at the bank. So if you have any concerns about that, please call my office, (221) 4303, or I have a number for New York State, which you could call, New York Tax and Finance, and they will tell you if your check has been cashed. And that's (518) 453-8146. (518) 453-8146. If you need that information, you can find it online. It's New York State Tax and Finance, and you could call them, and they will tell you. Or you can call my office, and I could give you that information. I just wanted to let people know that. Is that quick enough, Peter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He has a phone.
Not yet. So tonight, we have our... My wife's checking. She's checking.
She got it.
Tonight, we have two presentations. We have from Dutchess County Planning, the Deputy Commissioner, Jen Kokozza. Thanks for joining us tonight. And she is going to be discussing the Greenway Compact. And our town planner, Michelle Robbins, is here with her. Would you like to start, Ms. Kokozza?
Um, I'm brought, so I'm here to talk about the update.
Yes, just move that over there for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about updates that are available to the Greenway Compact Guide, our Greenway, it's called Greenway Connections. I brought copies. Do you all have them, or should I pass them around?
Yes, we have.
You have them?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So I thought maybe before, you know, I'm here to let you know that they're available, if you have any discussion about it, but I thought maybe what the better thing to do would be to actually talk about the Greenway Compact itself just a little bit, because I don't know how many of you were on the Town Board when this was originally adopted. So I brought this book. This is, this is our Greenway Compact for Dutchess County. It was developed basically by our department in concert with a lot of people from around the region. So not, I shouldn't say the region, but really Dutchess County people, so economic development people, planners, environmental educators. It, it is, it, it talks, I want to say this, it, it's really, the Greenway Compact is an agreement between the Greenway Council and the local municipalities. What in, and the Greenway Council and the Greenway Compact Program have certain benefits that this book, or being a member of the Compact community, allow municipalities to take advantage of. And basically, that has to come down to grant programs, which that's what everybody thinks is, you know, normally, when they think about the Greenway Compact, they think about available grants. The other thing that being a member of the Greenway Compact Program allows you, or one of the benefits, is that you also end up getting extra points when it comes to all the other state grants. So it'll also raise your score up a little bit if you're applying for a state grant. So those are the two major benefits of this. So this was developed by our department, like I said, in concert with a lot of other Dutchess County folks. It talks about regional growth. It talks about, you know, preserving open space. It talks about making sure that your centers are strong. And basically, the guides in the back, so there's 18 original guides that the town adopted back in 2002, so it's a while ago. So these guides are basically a how-to about everything else that's in the front of the book. So if you're looking at a site plan, you know, how do you make regional connections? How do you, maybe, maybe you have a strip mall that you want to redevelop. It gives you tools in the back of this guide, in the, in the form of guides. So there are usually two pages. Municipal boards, like you guys, would use them when you're developing a local law. Planners will use them at, when they're reviewing site plans, they can pull them out and say, "Hey, we have a problem locating a dumpster." One of the new guides actually addresses dumpsters and things that you want to know about them. So basically, that is the, that's the connection between these new guides that are available. They're updating this book, which is the contact with the state in getting, you know, Greenway grants and also regional cooperation between our neighbors.
Gotcha. So basically, this is an update to the original contract.
Right, right, right. So the, right, so the town adopted, it actually had to be adopted by the Greenway Council. So it was adopted by them. That made Dutchess County eligible as a Compact member for these state benefits. And then what happened was that each municipality in Dutchess, 29 out of the 30, actually adopted it. So, and then, right now, there's only eight, eight communities left to adopt the new, the new guides. So the new guides are being adopted by the local communities.
And, and, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
You said that this is a guide, so that this isn't, it's not that the town's bound to this.
No, right. It's completely voluntary. Everything, it is, it's totally voluntary. I checked out East Fishkill right before I left the office, and you have a chapter 117 about Greenway Connections, and then there's another small mention of it in the actual zoning code. When you go, you consider the Greenway Guides, you consider the principles. These are things you consider before passing law. It doesn't mean that you have to uphold what's in here, it's just that you consider them.
And if we were to use this as a tool to obtain a grant, would that still be non-binding?
Right, it's still non-binding. Right, you, it, these, this, and the real thing comes down to, it's a guide. You know, this isn't as enforceable as a zoning law. I mean, your zoning law is your zoning law, and your comprehensive plan is your comprehensive plan. These are, these are tools. It's meant as sort of like a, taking a regional look. It encourages intercommun, you know, intercooperation, such as like the watershed councils. You know, a lot of things that have to do with planning and development don't always fit within a municipality. You know, they cross municipal boundaries, so it encourages looking regionally at things. It also encourages you to look in every site plan about ways to do good planning. A lot of what's in this Greenway Compact is already, was already codified in local codes. I mean, local codes, when they went to develop this book, or they looked at local codes when developing this book, when they first put everything together, because that was, that was telling in itself about what was important to Dutchess communities. So a lot of that is already included in here. A lot of the guides that we have in here are, you probably already have some form of it incorporated into your codes. So there's seven new guides.
Gotcha. So Michelle, you've worked with many municipalities. Are there any municipalities you've come across that don't, aren't members of the Greenway Compact?
I've worked with several that are, and I'm not familiar with ones that aren't and are not necessarily, but I know that there are several that I've worked with that have a, have a Greenway Compact of some sort. And typically, in our planning department, a lot of, I was reviewing the guides again tonight, and a lot of those are things that we do anyway, just as part of site plan review, but I would, I would call them, for lack of a better term, like best practices, like ideas about like, okay, if you're putting a refuse container on a site plan, you want it so that it's accessible to the, you know, the refuse trucks that come in and remove them, and that it's fenced so that if there's any refuse that's free, it won't fly out of the container and that kind of thing. And it looks nice, and it's hidden from view, from a public roadway, those kinds of things. And then it, but there's many different categories. So it can also go to lighting, and they, they want you to look at lighting, and so that you don't have light glare, and that you're not putting too much lighting, but enough lighting so that sites are secure, and those kinds of things.
So an example for us that we just did zoning amendments to our hamlet, allowing a more diverse hamlet with commercial, multi-use, and residential. So how would something like the slower street, safer streets work with that?
So they, they're encouraging multimodal streets, where you allow for walkability and pedestrian access, and, and also streets that, if you have like a downtown center, where you're creating things that slow cars down naturally. So one of the things that does that is if you have buildings closer to the roadway and sidewalks, that generally makes you slow down in a street. An example of that would be like in Beacon or in Fishkill, where you automatically, you're not going to fly through there like you might in Hopewell, because Hopewell, the buildings aren't as close together, so you, you tend to go slower in areas where the buildings are closer, and that's those kinds of practices.
Right.
I almost see here that the updates are bringing us up to like the one about the stormwater and runoff. I mean, most subdivision application site plans with the planning board, a great part of the discussion is about the storm, how stormwater is going to be contained on the site. And I see here that one of the recommendations is about how you can lose some of the, lack of a better word, lose some of the stormwater within the roadway system, or island, if you will, in the roadway to absorb the water. And that, of course, presents a great deal of problems in the town for the other residents when a new subdivision comes in, we're always worried about the runoff. And also, just the other example is with the convenience store and gas pumps. You mentioned about the lighting, but I know with the, anyone who watches our planning board meetings, Michelle is our resident lighting expert, and spends a great deal of time concerned about light spillover beyond the side and using LED lighting, which is a direct, and so it seems to me that we're just, your attempt here is to update the Greenway to come into things that we've already been incorporating in our practice.
Yep, we are, we're actually working on an LED lighting, a new Greenway Guide regarding that, because the technology's changed. And back in 2000, no one was using LED lights, you know, and, and they do present issues. It doesn't mean that they can't be fixed, or they can't be addressed. And so, you know, it talks about how, what to look for. That new Greenway Guide, that one's not part of this packet, but, but right, you know, and right, as new things pop up, that's, this was supposed to be a living document, that we could always put in additional guides as necessary.
Right.
It's hard to get, I mean, it took a while to get these guides put together. There's seven of them, and when you're, you know, getting input from other people, it can take a while. And so, you know, you say, "Well, why hasn't this been adopted in so long?" And that's one of the reasons why. I mean, first, you start living with it, and then, you know, you start to add more documents. So there'll be more over time. It's not necessarily a quick process.
Right. Board members, comments?
A lot of these things, obviously, our planner has already instituted, and she's been going through, and we rely heavily on our professionals. We're, all of our professionals are fantastic. We're very happy with them. So really, when I look at this, and it's, there's really no teeth to it, because it's not binding. Just lost my train of thought there for a second, but it, it seems like the, the only benefit, then, to this is for a grant. Would that be fair to say?
No, I think that there's, there's other, there's benefits that exceed just the monetary. So if you're, I mean, these are, these are tools. So, you know, in terms of benefits, I mean, if you have new board members that are on your planning board, and they can look at this, and in a quick second, get a lot of researched information in two pages.
Right, but as, but just generally, as a guide only?
Right, as a guide.
But we already, like I said, we already have great professionals that do most of this, and they implement this. So I see it as the greatest and the only benefit, really, other than the guide, shouldn't say that, but is for a possibility of getting a grant.
That could be.
Very little, no negative impacts, really.
Right, I don't think that there's a negative impact, but, right, I mean, different communities are going to use it different ways. So whereas East Fishkill, you might have paid professional planners, there's other communities that don't. And so this is for all 30 municipalities, that don't always have paid professional planners, or maybe they don't have an engineer, or maybe they don't have a planning board attorney at every meeting. You know, this is something that they can pull out and say, "Okay, wait a minute, so we're talking about that trash enclosure, you know, what do I need to know? I know that there's a Greenway Guide on it." Now, I don't know how many of them do that anymore. I mean, this book has been around for a while. I have a feeling that what happens is people read it, read it, read it, and then, you know, maybe put it down for a little while, but, you know, as new guides come around, people, you know, I think that they're at least interested in that portion of it. And then, you know, if the planning board, planning board could be recommending something to the Town Board, we see that happen all the time. You know, there'll be a local law that'll come by, or there'll be a plan that maybe, you know, requires a zoning change. The planning board will, you know, they use their knowledge to help inform the Town Board and make decisions, and in that way, it could be educational, in terms of just another form of information.
All right. You said the attorney at the planning board, do we not have to have the attorney at the planning board? Watch TV at all.
Are there any costs associated with being a member of the Compact?
No.
So, I have a couple of questions. I know that I read the document, and there are costs to these programs, and the cost might not be evident, but when we put this in place, for the people who are gonna, first of all, you only mentioned few things in the packet that this document addresses. There is a lot of more, and I agree with Councilman Franco and the town lawyer, this is a voluntary partnership. But many, many times, these programs are, are passed along our planners, are passed along our planning boards, and when project come for review, there is an implementation phase. So my main concern is when we're talking about restricting developments in certain areas of the town, and this is what this document mostly addresses. It's something that we're already done for the town, but if, if we look at the big picture, this actually guides a town, telling their citizen where they could build and where they could live. And the impact is to live the majority of the area green, and they talk about farms, and in certain instances, when we say cost, for instance, they talk about bike lanes, which stresses a lot, the implementation of bike lanes. Close, closed customer, cluster of homes, which would allow bicyclers to use the community more frequently. It also, there is a very high cost to that. And even though, let's say, there is a grant available for $50,000, many times, the cost, these costs could run into the millions. So, and the majority of the cost that absorbs by the communities, that absorb by the developers, by the business community. I know in New York City, for instance, like you well know, where they shrunk the lanes of the cars and created bike lanes. The traffic is horrendous in New York City right now. They, they not only created a nightmare, but if lately, according to the latest news organization, there is a high, higher level of mortality caused by bicycles in New York City that was not existing before. So there is a high price to be paid over here. And even though you only suggested we're talking about recycling cans, which I don't think none of us are in disagreement, but the, this is, this is a plan that, it's not just a Dutchess County plan, it's a New York State plan, and it's been, I'm sure you're aware of, it's been going on for about 15 years. This has an undertone, and probably an overtone, as far as saving the planet, saving green, the green thinking. Some of us are not disagreeing that something needs to be done, but this plan, the way it's written, it's pushing us in that direction. And, you know, before I was a board member in the community, being a member of the community, I heard many times, and I'm sure some of the members on this board heard, the business community complained how tough it is to put a development together, all the secret regulations, which, like we all agree, there is a lot of disinformation in the secret reviews, and the high cost of putting a development together. So right now, developers in our community, they try to steer away from parcel properties with long driveways because of the review regulation and drainage, ponds, that's an extremely highly costly endeavor. What are your thoughts on this? I mean, I know that you only represent a miniscule detail, but the other point that I want to make is some board members like the idea of getting grants. And we spoke about grants and land. And grants, we all agree, is taxpayers' dollars. It's our money that is taken from us, and then in this form, given back to us, in a form of saying, "If you accept these and put them in place, there are grants available for you guys to receive." It's, it's something that is very costly. I mean, our federal government is using this, our state government is using this kind of methodology, and some of us are, are forced to use that kind of system to conduct business in our town. But I, I, you know, I like the idea of the town taking care of itself, and less intrusion from outside forces, including these kind of programs. So if you could just give me what I just...
Sure. So, so, all right, so if we start back in just talking about the bike lanes, you don't have to do bike lanes. You know, this is an idea that if you can accommodate a bike lane, you might, you're, you might already have a road that's wide enough to accommodate a bike lane, and it's simply moving a stripe over two feet or three feet in order to accommodate the bike lanes. You don't have to do the bike lane, but you can if you want. Since it's all voluntary, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say that you have to do everything all the time. I mean, you know, you have to use some common sense. You know, if it says you should plant street trees, and you can't accommodate, you know, a street tree every 30 feet, then you don't. It's a guide, it's, it's a place to start. About the expense of developers, a lot of that has to do with the local process. This doesn't really get at expense. The county, I think, is very proactive. I think that this guide actually, this, the Greenway Connections, actually, it talks about promoting centers and promoting the possibility of development in centers and preserving your outline areas. You need kind of both, and when you go to comprehensive plans, many of the comprehensive plans talk about, they want to preserve, they want to have places that still look agricultural, you know, especially if you're in the upper parts of Dutchess County. So this gives you tools in order to do that. I mean, it, you know, it, it talks about making places more walkable, so that you actually have places people want to go to, and it shows you how to do that. And so that's going to help developers, and that's going to help business. I'm trying to think what some of your other points were. I mean, I, I, I understand, you know, you're talking about tax dollars, but they're coming back to you. If there's a long process with getting a development through, this doesn't really impact that. It's your, your zoning codes and your processes, and your applicants sometimes, too, to make sure that they're giving you the right information. When you go, you know, if the, if the Town Planning Board is asking for information, make sure that the developer is giving it to you. And sometimes, just getting information can be more difficult and can make processes take a little bit longer. But I don't see this as being a monetary cost. It's, it's, I think that it can encourage economic development, and it just shows you sort of the ways to do it, ways to make places more friendly, to make, you know, places more walkable, and ways to develop even in the outs, you know, the outskirts of the county without impacting the things that the residents actually value.
So the other thing, I don't know, you do have the packet in front of you, right?
Mm-hmm.
The way the document opens up regional patterns, there is a paragraph that kind of caught my attention, and it's a second paragraph. I think it's this one over here?
Centers in Greenway. Centers in green spaces.
Regional pattern, yeah, centers. And there is, it says over there at one point, that auto dependency also on fuel and basic contradiction. Low-density sprawl creates higher level of traffic and congestion. So on the last paragraph, it says, "An escalating local tax to services of all these category subdivisions make the continuous strip and sprawl conversion of outline areas unsustainable." Talks about global energy and climate concerns, make policy changes even more urgent. So this is another point that, and again, I am not an environmentalist, I don't believe in that, and, but this document, over and over again, brings the point about environment and the need to build a certain way. And again, I don't think this Town Board, we already have adopted certain local laws that would stimulate business in our community. But again, the undertone of this document stresses over and over again throughout the different, the different aspects. The, the, the whole Greenway-inspired concept, it's based on global warming. And again, that is, that is, this is a basic principle issue for certain people, including myself. And I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but I understand that this is only recommendations.
Right.
But as I said, I haven't, I've, I've attended seminars where planners have, have been in the rooms, and many times, things are presented with this undertone. So we're not going to be here tonight discussing the political environment in New York State, but there is a cost when certain things are implemented a certain way. You know, the business community, there is a price to pay. And at the end of the day, if we put certain restrictions in certain places, the taxpayer and the consumer is the one that pays the price all the time. So even though certain people might think that, you know, diesel trucks and diesel cars are not the way of the future, when we take that away from the picture, there is a high cost to pay, so.
I, I also think, too, I mean, in, in looking at the sections that you're reading, you know, I think that when you develop, I mean, if you develop a center, if you allow a center to happen, if you zone so that it can happen, so that you do have a higher density in a center, it doesn't mean that you're telling somebody what to do. It's that you're giving a developer an option to build maybe what they want to build. And when you build in a center, and you have a certain number of people that are there, that become, it might be easier for a developer to connect to if it's central water, and that would maybe lower the cost than it would if he was going to have to create something big, bigger, you know, if you're in a suburban area. And really, I think that that's part and parcel what this document is getting at, too. I mean, you want to allow for things to happen if they still want to happen, you know. The more traffic congestion you have on the roads, the more that people complain about it. I mean, you hear about, you know, traffic congestion, "I can't get through here, you know, it took me forever to go." And, and, you know, part of this document is just sort of saying, "Well, you know, we have to also make sure that we allow developers," and, you know, as towns want to grow, they, you know, make sure that you give a developer an option to put some additional housing in a center. Doesn't mean that they have to do it, you're not telling them to do it, but then, you know, there might be people that locate there that then are walking to businesses, that are walking to restaurants, stores, and shops, and, and it, all those trips now are created in the center rather than going on the outside of the road all the time, back and forth. It's not saying that you can't also develop, the developer might be able to through the local zoning code. I mean, this does not talk about, this doesn't designate anything for the town, the local zoning does. And that's where that sort of responsibility about where people are developing or not really lays, not so much in here. This just gives points as to, you know, why it would be good to develop a center and why it might be good to... and why it might be good to preserve your open space.
Anybody else wish to make some comments? No?
This will be the last set of updates we get overall on the board. Seventeen years to get these ones.
That's right, it'll be seventeen more and I'll be back. I think I'll be retired.
And you'll take our position.
No.
No.
I'll be retired by then too.
So usually we don't have speakers' comments for our workshops. Councilman Marinaro had some concerns from the community, correct?
I just invited two guests to briefly address and make some comments about this. I appreciate the time. I want to thank the board for allowing this. There is Ms. Laval and Ms. Jimenez. Whoever wants to go first?
Are your guests experts in?
Yes, yes, they are.
And do they do this as a profession?
No, they don't.
So what makes them experts? Well, when they come up, they can ask them.
Can you wave them over?
I told her. He's coming.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to ask you this evening. I put together some information for you and then decided how I wanted to present it. And it goes to some of the comments that Councilman Marinaro made about what is built into a lot of the new projects that we're seeing here in our community, in Dutchess County, across the state, the country, and in fact, the world. So I decided to start by considering why we're here. And we're here because you are elected representatives charged with making the decisions that affect our community. And we're a representative government, so you are bringing to the decision-making process hopefully the intentions and objectives of the people who elected you. That's our country. That's our system of government. We're representative government. As Manny mentioned, a lot of the new projects are very much tied to sustainability objectives. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a bird's eye view or macro view of where sustainability comes from. And I apologize if it's information you're all very familiar with, but to the extent that it's not, I appreciate your indulgence. Sustainability is an international objective of the United Nations. There, it is a product of Agenda 21. Agenda 21 is basically the international plan for the 21st century in addressing concerns that the international community feels are facing us as a, what they consider a global society. Basically, the premise is that the world is in a state of physical crisis and that the population cannot be sustained by the earth's resources at its current pace of energy use and waste production. And that the international community must come together and address this urgent concern. So these meetings have been taking place for decades. I have several printouts that I, you're welcome to take a look at. I only made ten copies of each. This is a meeting that took place here in the United States, Salt Lake City, Utah, just this past August, 26th to the 28th. And it's, this is an ongoing concern that the UN has, that they're constantly updating their goals and their agendas. Basically, they think the world is in a state of, as I said, physical crisis. And they've come together basically to clean it up. I don't know if any of you have, say, children that share a room or were siblings who maybe shared a room. You send them to their room to clean it up, two of them? And how well does it work? But we're going to have the entire international community come together and agree on how to clean up the globe. It's a voluntary program. So all of the countries are going to volunteer to come together to come up with these ideas they consider very urgent concern, to make cities and human settlements inclusive, safe, resilient and sustainable by 2030. They've updated the terminology. It's no longer Agenda 21. It's Agenda 2030 because they've accelerated these goals. They want to achieve them now, not by sometime, vague time in the 21st century, but by the year 2030. They want to reduce carbon emissions, reduce the use of fossil fuels, recycle. They want to manage population growth and reduce carbon footprints. It has countless humanitarian objectives. It's basically a social justice program. Why do you get to leave a three acre or fifteen acre or twenty acre carbon footprint? And while other people, you know, are restricted to three hundred square foot apartment. So these are documents straight off of the UN website. And the objectives that I'm stating are plainly, you know, very plainly laid out. This is United Nations Sustainable Development Conference on Environment and Development, Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, 3rd to the 14th of June, 1992. It addresses social and economic dimensions, conservation and management of resources for development, strengthening the role of major groups. There's a lot of, shall we say, social justice objectives in here. So we're not just cleaning up the world. We're doing it in a way that is allegedly fair and equitable. Now remember, we're working with China, Iraq, North Korea, okay? And it's a voluntary program. So basically, we're self-policing, if you will, our environmental concerns. And we're hoping that it's going to matter in comparison to what China or Russia or India might or might not do. So we have to ask questions, are the concerns reasonable? Are the solutions that are being proposed and very rapidly implemented effective response to the concerns? And are we really sustaining the globe? We're spending an awful lot of money. Everything, as Manny said, everything is now sustainable development, sustainable development, real estate, the bike lanes. The bike lanes are not to accommodate people who want to ride. They're basically an endeavor to get people riding bikes so they're not driving cars. This is a real-
Is that a bad thing though?
Is it a bad thing? No. Is it a practical thing? Is it going to work? If we're the only ones who do it, what, like, how is it going to, you know, what's the value of it if we're the only ones who are doing it? And we're, in this country, we have unalienable rights to achieve our objectives and opportunities. So are we abdicating our property rights for the sake of sustaining the globe? And if we're doing that, have we really looked at whether or not it's potentially going to have a substantial impact? Or are we basically self-neutering our own property rights, our representation? Because once this is done, you know, we do shared services, okay? The more collective our services become, the farther our voice is from the decision-making process. So if we made a decision in the town and the town shares services with all the other towns in the county, now the decision's being made at the county level and our town has, our voice has been diluted.
But it-
Saves a significant amount of money.
Saves us a significant amount of money. Depends on what the shared service is.
And to what you're saying though, how's a non-binding agreement going to cause any of this?
The fact that it's non-binding doesn't change the question of whether or not it's effective, right? So what I said is, we're self-neutering. We're putting our, we're limiting ourselves in terms of property rights, in terms of voice in the decision-making process for the sake of sustaining the globe. Are the decisions really lending themselves to sustainability or not?
But these guidelines that we're being asked to consider for the board to adopt, let's talk about the bike lanes. We have probably one of the best assets culturally and physically is the Dutchess Rail Trail.
Absolutely, yeah.
And many of the applications that come into the town planning board that are located in a close proximity, without the town asking, they're providing access to the rail trail because I go out there on the weekends and, you know, there's a lot of people on bikes and everything. So they like that as well.
I'm not suggesting-
The other thing is, we have several communities in the town that were developed in the 50s and 60s where there was no regard given for water runoff or where the houses were built. And now that's, those communities are suffering badly.
Well, we get a lot of complaints that because of-
So one of these principles, one of these guides says, try to contain the water on the property and not just discharge it on joining properties.
I'm not suggesting that there are no-
Benefits?
There are no benefits or no reasons not to engage in some shared services. What I'm saying is, it's important for us to recognize what the real objective is, where the concept is coming from, you know, who has interest in it? And is it really a local concern? And are we truly representing the concerns? We're talking about changing the entire landscape of the county. And we're talking about it in localities.
Every time we build a house.
I'm sorry? We do.
We do that every seventeen years.
We do. We do. But we, but, but with regard to the grants that are coming down, they are all tied to this sustainability objective that's coming from the UN. So all I'm saying is, look-
Be careful.
At who's really driving this process. If, ask if the objectives are really serving the community. Ask if you want this. Because, because quite frankly, this agenda is so, it's so aggressive. It's so broad. So few people know really where it's coming from, okay? They refer-
It's voluntary.
I think you're talking about Agenda 21. You mean Agenda 21.
Agenda 21.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay.
Which is not, it's not a treaty and it's also non-binding.
Agenda 21, correct?
It's not, but meetings are taking-
The UN is the most toothless organization.
It's absolutely not toothless.
It's absolutely, it's the most toothless organization around.
I beg to differ.
It's absolutely toothless.
Okay.
It's the biggest waste of money we have in this country.
Let's keep on pointing about what we're here for, the reasons are for the compact.
So, so this is, this took place, as I said, Salt Lake City, Utah, three weeks ago, okay? Many of you know, I was on the school board for a short time, okay? My concern and my platform in running for the school board was Common Core. Common Core is a product of Agenda 21. It is the same voluntary participation, okay? And the federal government offered all of the states, when they were desperate for money, a pittance, eleven dollars per student in Wapentures to sign on to the entire Common Core program. Massive data collection, you know, dictated-
Could we just stick to the point with the compact? Because I don't want to have a political event here, yeah.
My point is voluntary isn't always voluntary. Grants and funding come with conditions.
And I agree with you that they do. But unfortunately, in our society, you live in Hopewell? Do you drive through Hopewell or downtown?
I do drive through Hopewell. I work in Hopewell.
So that's a seven million dollar project for those two roundabouts to be happening. This town board cannot ask the residents of this town to pay for that. But they have to every day drive and not be happy because of the traffic conditions on 82. So we are practically applying for every grant possible to help our residents be happier and help fix the traffic conditions here. Without the grant, we're not going to fix our traffic condition problems.
All I'm saying is, be careful because grants are often bait. And understand who is offering the money, what the real objective is. This is not, you know, from your guys' perspective, it may make the town nicer. It may make it more convenient. But at the end of the day, the Agenda 21 sustainability objectives is basically, is basically that the United States and all of our local towns are abdicating our property rights for the sake of a couple of bucks. They want us to live closer together because they believe that in the great scheme of things, this will make, you know, this will save the globe.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but we were elected to help our residents keep taxes low and fix the problems that we have in this town, which are traffic and other concerns. And I don't see how we can accomplish that if we don't accept grants. Not saying you're wrong, but how else do we do it? They want, they put us here so we could look at the problems and try and fix them.
May I ask one follow-up question and I'll be done? Where in the town do you live and how do you see this negatively impacting you?
I'm not discussing this specific project. I don't live in a town. I live in Fishkill, but I work, I work in Hopewell. So I do travel through the town. I'm not suggesting this, I'm not really opining specifically on this project. What I'm saying is, all of these projects, they are, they are part of this agenda of consolidating the population. You know, with, the goals are very, you know, they're very, you know, worthwhile and lofty, but at the end of the day, when you see what's going on, you know, I'll go back to the Common Core. They, you know, they have these lofty goals. At the end of the day, they weren't accomplished by the money that they were given. And it wound up costing them a whole lot more money. You know, they got a one-shot deal grant and then they had a bunch of conditions that they had to continue to meet. And if you go to, if you go to a school board meeting now and you say, I don't, I'm not, I'm a little concerned with this data collection or this particular curriculum, they will tell you, there's nothing we can do. You need to go to the state because the state passed these regulations, these legislations. So as a board, stay aware. Do not put yourselves out of business. Do not wind up, you know, eight or five people-
We put ourselves out of business when we don't address the concerns of our constituents.
Putting all of your hands on the same rubber stamp from a piece of legislation that came to the state because you took money and that was a condition of the state. I'm just here to share the information that I know, the research that I've done regarding Agenda 21. You know, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm not challenging anybody on anything. I'm sharing with you that there is an agenda, a very serious, powerful, highly financed- a, a very serious, powerful, highly financed, highly, um, promoted agenda that, that if we as a community, as a, as a state, as a country, as a representative republic, don't recognize the risks that we're putting ourselves at, um, you know, we're making long-term decisions that affect the communities, um, and, and, and the future.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, ma'am.
Can I share just one quick piece of information with you on one of these agendas? Uh, from these handouts? This Sustainable Development from Rio from nineteen ninety-two talks about stakeholders and economic dimensions and conservation and whatnot. In section three, it discusses strengthening the role of major groups. It's, it's item numbers twenty-three through thirty-two. The first one is Global Action for Women Towards Sustainable and Equitable Development. That's the first, that's the first concern in strengthening the role of major groups. The next is Children and Youth in Sustainable Development. This is a pledge. And you can say that they're toothless, but our children are pledging in school, in their UN clubs, in their history classes, pledging commitment to the Sustainable Development Agenda. That's in this country, okay? It's voluntary, but our schools have all adopted it. The list goes on, recognizing and strengthening the role of indigenous people and their communities, strengthening the role of non-governmental organizations, and at the very bottom of the list, strengthening the role of farmers. We don't eat if we don't farm. But in our goal to sustain our planet, we're concerned with strengthening the role of women and children, and farmers is at the bottom of the list. Um, I'll leave these for you guys, and you're welcome to take the measure length.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Just state your name, please.
My name is Sapphire Jimenez. Um, I'm gonna be a little bit shorter than Ann and gonna get straight to the point. Um, I commend you all, um, for trying to uphold the task at hand, which is to make the town better for the people. But with that, none of us are under the age of fifteen, let's say, as adults. We, at some point, get to the point where we make decisions for our young children that they themselves cannot make. Sometimes it's very hard, and sometimes it's almost a black and white decision. Because we have experience and we have the end in mind. I think what Ann was, and she, I'm sorry, we don't even know each other, uh, very well, but we have had the experience of what Agenda 21 affects, the effects of it. We've seen it in California, we've seen it in different places. And what I was saying before was, because of our age, we can tell young people, "Listen, if you do this, if you don't take your education serious, if you don't get off your iPhone and start learning how to focus for a couple of minutes, if you don't practice, you're not gonna make the team. You have to do this." And sometimes we literally have to pull the phone off and we literally have to take them to the library and do certain things that they don't want to do, because we have the end in mind. And I guess what we're trying to, um, at least open up your eyes, is to see that Germany and all those people that eventually got to the place where this guy was taking over the land, and they were like, "Oh my God", is because the people themselves didn't realize what was happening. And we are trying to wake you up, what Agenda 21 is. It's a serious issue. Really serious issue. And if at all, go home and look into this. Though, if you look at that, um, that proposal, it looks wonderful. The first thing is like, "Oh my gosh, I don't have to pick up the car to go drive, I could send the kids to go get this." Oh, I, the kids can have, you know, a whole bunch of friends. It looks terrific. Nobody in their right mind or quickly that doesn't look at the big picture would say that that is not a great idea, because it is, it's very well-presented. It has things that at, at first sight look commonsensical. But as adults, as the leaders of the group, you have to look at the big picture. What does Agenda 21, how will that affect? And what is happening is, they're doing it in one little town here, another little town here. Eventually, we will all be the same. You go through North Carolina now, and you see this throughout. And it's so easy for the government to come, and now because it has been systematized, to, for them to take over. And you have to ask your question, the fundamental question we want you to think is if we engage in this, are we engaging in something that eventually is gonna tie us up? You can take that first step, you can take those first grants, and while we're here and still have our livelihood, it might not affect us, but it will affect our kids, because it's already been systematized. And that is the problem. That is the problem. Once they have all these communities that people don't really talk to one another, because they're enclosed and it's so easy to manipulate them. Once that has been established through our nation's guise, we've lost it. And we need to wake up. That cannot happen in our nation, in our time. We have the tools, we have the information, we have the experience of what has happened already. And all we are saying is, before you go to the next step, and I understand it's a ludicrous, I mean, you know, really, like I said, you look at it and it looks, it looks great. But Agenda 21 is a big, big deal. It's guys that are smart, that have money, it's a system. It's not a, a one individual thing, it's a system. George Soros is in this, big, very big, very big. And you have to wake up and see what's happening. It's not just this town, it's this town with the next town, with the next town, and eventually it's just easier, okay, for the UN to take over our nation.
The UN is not gonna take over our nation, ma'am.
Okay.
It's never gonna happen.
Okay. I hope it doesn't.
It's not.
Okay, I hope it doesn't.
It's a toothless organization. And a lot of this is conspiratorial. It's a toothless organization.
That scares me.
It's a non-treaty, it's, this is just a guide.
All right, it is...
It's just a guide, we're not...
It's a, it's a strong guide.
So if, if, so if we didn't, if we didn't pass this, or the town never accepted the Greenway Compact, and we went on our own and said that we would like people to conserve water and build, uh, walkability and have, um, better traffic patterns, that's okay?
No, so here...
As long as we do it on our own?
Here's what I'm suggesting to you.
Because everybody, would you agree that isn't that better for your town?
This is what I, I was suggesting, the only thing I'm suggesting, pause. Pause and think, what is the bigger picture? Sometimes when you take the easy, the, 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 uh, how would you say? The, go to, to the supermarket and take the meal that has already been prepared, that you just go and put it in the microwave and you eat it, and that's quick, you're done. But sometimes if you take the time, you can come up with something better. And if you realize what's already there, and I challenge you to study this Agenda 21.
But can I ask you, but can I ask a question?
And so what I'm saying is...
Regardless of, if we didn't, uh, forget the politics of it.
Right.
If, do you live in Hopewell?
I don't.
Okay, so you've been to Hopewell, to downtown?
I have, I commute to there.
Would you agree that if we put sidewalks in, it's better for people to get around that little hamlet? Or no, it's not?
Okay.
Forget politics, I'm just saying as practicality.
Okay, as practicality, perhaps it is, okay? But then it needs to be your decision, and that's what I'm just asking you to pause. And, no, 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 no. So, okay, so here's the deal. It, it has been presented to you in such a way that it is palatable to you, okay? Inventions weren't created when you just took the first bite of whatever was there. You have to look at the different things that go on. How is it gonna affect your farmers? How is it gonna affect the businesses particularly? Because money, unfortunately, is talks and makes a lot of other decisions. If your businesses are, if you're gonna have those zoning restrictions and those zoning, uh, those codes, guess what? That is going to affect you. Your housing, that car that you want, no. Eventually, they start small, but eventually they'll come after, okay? You can't have this and you can't have that, and this business can't be here and this business, because you've opened up a door. So what you did, you're at the point where you can start thinking for yourselves. And what we're asking you is, to look how it has affected other communities. Look how it's affecting the nation. And then you say, hmm, maybe we could come up with a different thing. Maybe it's similar, but it's under our terms. It's no longer with that grant. Once that grant is given, you're committed. Nothing is free, and we're all, all old enough to know that. Okay, nothing is free. So take time to consider what is being offered to you and the suggestions. Some of them might be pliable and some of them you might want to implement them. But not all of them, and perhaps not under their grants and their titles and, and what all they encompass. I think Ann has a, a good set of information, look at that.
Can I just offer this one last quick piece of it? This is an article that just came out on September eighth. "The Chief of World Meteorological Organization Castigates Climate Alarmists." This man...
Who wrote the article and which, where's it from?
Okay. The head of the World Meteorological Organization.
But what organization is it?
Issued, issued an unprecedented review of climate alarmists in an interview, okay? The man is the Secretary General of the World Meteorological Organization, and he was one of the original members of the UN Environment Program that created the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. So he is head of one of the two organizations that came together to create Agenda 21. And he's now saying that climate scientists are under increasing assault from radical climate extremists. Okay, climate experts have been attacked by these people and they claim we should be much more radical. Basically, the, the politics are putting pressure on the scientists to make this an issue that they don't believe that it is.
Okay, could you leave the information on the table here for any council persons wish to, to partake in it? Thank you.
Certainly will.
Very much. One, just so that we close, I just wanna make a quick comment. I know that, to some people, this information might be something that it's off-base, but it all ties in into what we're discussing. And again, it's not, like many of us said, anything that it's, uh, it has to be taken, but it's a recommendation. But if we look at the thought of shared services, which is not something that was created in Dutchess County, but came from the state, it's a consolidation idea. Right now, the governor wants to do away with a lot of the villages. He'd probably like to do away with this town board. We're a nuisance i- in a lot of ways, because we have to decide for our community. But this is the way the system was created by the founding fathers. We should have a small community town board that takes care of our people. We walk the streets, we're always around, we listen to their concerns, and we address their, their, whatever their needs are. But, there is behind Sustainable Development and shared services, which is pushed upon us because we do not have the tools to do it ourselves.
We don't have the money either.
Right, because the money's been taken away from us. And I'm not gonna say, I'm, we're not gonna go into that, we all know. If our money stood with us, Tom, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about this, because we are able to do what needs to be done. We don't need anybody to tell us how to do it. This town board...
What would be the disadvantage of us obtaining all the information from them and then we make our own decisions, just like we always do?
There is no disadvantage, uh, we are all in the, a smart individual in this room. And what is happening is, is a, a, a piece by piece change that is happening before our eyes, that we take for granted. And sometimes, it's because of the needs that we, we as individuals and taxpayers say, "Well, where is the money gonna come from?" Unfortunately, we are put in that situation. You know, we, this town over years, a pretty rich town. We, we create tax base, but our tax base goes someplace else. If we had that tax base, we would be doing a lot of projects on our own. But then we have this voluntary or involuntary recommendation. And it says, "You know what, there is three, four, five, ten million dollars available. If you guys comply, you don't have to. But if, guess what, if you don't comply, instead of being on the top of the list, you'll be on the bottom of the list." That is the issue. So, you know, it's all an ideological discussion, but it's an important one to have. Maybe, you know, it seems like, uh, something that it's not important, but let me tell you guys, it is extremely important, because one day, they're not gonna need us, they're not gonna need a town board. That's their goal, they wanna do away with us. They wanna centralize power in Albany, where people in this town, they will not stop Tom Franco and say, "Hey, Tom, there is a potter, or there is a drainage issue, or they will not go to CPDA with something else." So these people would have to pick up the phone and whoever is gonna help them, God bless them. But that's where we're going with this. And it's all because we wanna save the dollar that we don't have. So, I just wanna close in with that. I wanna thank you, everybody, for just this light discussion, and, uh, thank you to the county for their presentation.
Well, if I can, um, answer any questions, please feel free to call me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will, this will be on our agenda, uh, at the end of the month, and the town board will vote as they see fit.
Okay, thank you.
I'll leave it at that. Okay, thank, thank you very much, Deputy Commissioner. Uh, next, um, Mr. Ballkind. He is the Commissioner of Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. I have a couple of things I would like to share with the board, just to give you a little information.
Nothing with the UN, Bob.
I can't promise that.
Hi.
Thank you. I'd love if the UN took the roads over.
So would we. We, we can't afford to fix our roads as it is.
That's right, we, we can't either, nobody can. Okay, I'm gonna, I'd like if, if, if the board would let me, I'd like to give you an update on, on two projects. The first one I'd like to just give you a quick update on is the county's, uh, Phillips Road Bridge Replacement Project. And then I'd like to talk briefly about the Beekman Road, the federal aid road project on Beekman Road.
Great.
All right, so the bridge project, I gave you a, a packet of about five or six sheets of paper. This is, these are just, I mean, there's a plan set that's probably about sixty pages deep. I just gave you a couple of plans to show you the, sort of the, the high-level stuff of what the bridge is. And then I'll just go through it narratively, um, with you. So, the, um, the bridge was in dire need of replacement. All of you probably know that if you've driven over that Phillips Road. The bridge is on a very sharp kind of angular curve, and it's a, it's a decrepit bridge with bad railing and the whole nine yards. So, we put it on the program and we started the design, oh, I think it must have been last fall or maybe early in the spring.
Does the highway superintendent know where this is? I don't think so.
I've seen the water over the top of the rails.
I bet.
So, um, our goal was, was to do two, well, really, three things. Number one, restore the bridge to a fully rated, fully load-capable structure. Number two, provide a, a better alignment of the road. So it's a little bit of a smoother curve through there without really shoving the road one way or the other or impacting property to the extent possible. Um, and number three, and this was a request of the town, could we somehow try to make it so that, to your point, it was less flooding problem there?
Right.
All right, so those are kind of our three big goals. I think the project is going to accomplish all three. Um, as far as the alignment is concerned, I just would draw your attention to... Let's see which, I'm just trying to see which, which page shows it best. Uh, it might be, yeah, I guess that might be the best one. So it'd be what we, what I'm, what we have at the uh, sheet ten of forty. It's down in the, the lower right corner, says sheet ten of forty.
Third sheet in, third sheet in, guys.
So basically, we're gonna be making a, sort of a smoother S curve through the, through the um, through the intersecting area. Um, it, it's, we're acquiring property from a couple of the property owners. It's, it's sort of minor right-of-way acquisition. We, we do try to be respectful of our property owners as we do these things. So it's gonna be a slightly better alignment. It'll be a smoother curve transitioning through. It won't be that sort of jerky turn over the bridge. The other thing we're doing is we're elevating the bridge itself. Um, and this is in an effort to improve the flooding situation. The bridge span currently is about forty feet, forty-five feet, somewhere in that range. We're opening this bridge span up to seventy feet. So we are gonna almost double the opening under the bridge to pass much more water through it. Almost twice as much water. And we're also increasing the height of the bridge, about a foot and a half, two feet. So we think that dramatically opening the waterway and then, and then raising the bridge slightly. We can't raise the bridge too, too much because it would create such a hump in the road through those curves. It would be a little awkward to drive on. So our, our main strategy to increase the flow was to really open it up, almost double the span. So, um, that, that's how we did that. We're also providing um, two eleven-foot lanes and two four-foot shoulders over the bridge, over the bridge itself. We're gonna transition relatively quickly back to the existing road width on either side of the approaches. You know, we're not trying to make a major highway out of, out of Phillips Road. What we try to do when we do these projects locally, when we do these local bridge projects, we try to provide at least a four-foot shoulder so that in the future, if Phillips Road were to ever have a shoulder added onto it, if you guys ever did like a shoulder project, you wouldn't be sort of log jammed over the bridge. You may not get to that for another thirty, forty, fifty years, who knows when. But the life of this bridge may be seventy-five to a hundred years.
Great.
So we wanna provide that capability. We don't know what it's gonna look like in, in um, in fifty years from now. I'll, I'll come back and check it, but um, you know, we, we never know.
You lose your money with it.
Right, could be bicycling. So, the other thing I wanna draw your attention to is we're, in order to build this project, because it is sort of a tight site, we are gonna, we are gonna close the site entirely and do an off-site detour. Sort of what we normally do when we have these small local bridges, we don't have a lot of room to sort of push people off to one side and rebuild because we're basically building the bridge right where the old one is. It's about a six-point-seven mile detour. It involves, if you're traveling north off of the bridge, you'd go Noah Way, you'd go Beekman Road, you'd go down County Route Eight, Greenhaven Road, and down to two sixteen, which basically brings you back up to Phillips Road around the bridge. There's a, there's sort of a map that shows the detour route. I don't think it's terribly exciting, but I just, you know, these are, these are questions that come up. People don't care about how big the bridge beam is or what kind of, they wanna know, how far am I gonna have to drive to get around this thing?
How long, Bob?
Exactly.
How long is the construction?
Yeah, right, exactly. So this'll be a one-season deal.
One season, okay.
Yeah, this'll be, we'll probably, we're gonna go out to bid with this project probably October, November. We're almost there now. Um, we'll award the contract over the winter. We'll get the contractor all lined up and ready to go. And by, by March, April, they'll, they'll have at it and they should be done by Thanksgiving. So it'll be a one-season deal. Might be finished before that. We generally give them four to six months. So between April to September, somewhere around there. Let me see if I have any other things on here of, of noteworthiness. Talked about the bridge widths, um, realignment, yeah. That's, that's pretty much the, the project. It's not terribly earth-shattering. It's basically a replacement of an existing bridge. Um, so, uh, if, if you want to...
So when are you thinking of bidding? When would it start?
We're gonna bid it in October or November. We'll open bids in December or, or November, December. Um, we'll award the contract over January, February, and then we'll give the contractor the notice to proceed um, in March. And it's, like I said, six, six months plus or minus. Um, they should have it all done. It's a, it's a pretty simplistic bridge, quite frankly, from, relative to what we typically do.
So we will give ample notice to the residents who are watching. We'll have another discussion about this, multiple discussions about this. We'll discuss the, uh, the alternate routes. And uh, we'll have a whole timetable. We'll put everything on the website for everybody to see and know.
Great. Yep, so the bulk of the construction will occur in the summer, obviously when the school buses aren't running. But there will be certainly times, if they start in March or April, April, May, June, buses impacts. Um, September, October, bus impacts. The bulk of the season, not so much, but yeah, we, so as, as we get poised to start construction on all of our projects like this, we, we have a whole sort of a litany of notifications between local emergency responders. We work with our emergency response department at the county. Uh, we make sure that all the responding agencies who cover this area either have a plan to get around the detour or often is the case where uh, an, an adjacent responding agency will cover one side of the bridge or the other. State police, county sheriffs, um, local law enforcement, EMS. We talked to the schools, we talked to the post office to make sure the mail can get around properly. Um, so we, we do all of those outreach processes. Um, and we do that a little bit closer to when, after we've awarded the contract, we meet with the contractor. We ask them, what's your schedule? We demand a, sort of a very detailed schedule of events, when they start, when they do certain activities. Once we have that all nailed down, then we let all the residents know what to expect and when to expect it. We typically put VMS signs out, um, letting people know usually two to four weeks ahead of the project. So people who are actually driving on the road, they're the most impacted, of course. People who use the road regularly, those VMS signs do a great job in getting their attention. If you're on the road, you see those signs, you're like, oh, I actually have to do something different tomorrow. So, so yeah, that, that's sort of standard protocol for what we do.
Excellent.
Um, a- and as time goes on, I'll, we're, we're probably at ninety percent complete on the drawings. Um, as time goes on, we'll share the final set. Um, I'll, I'll let you know when we go out to bid, just because it may be of interest. And, and I'll keep you posted on those, those little milestones. But um, you're not gonna see any activity out here until next spring.
Okay, and if my engineer has any concerns or...
Scott, we've been sort of emailing now and again on, on it, so, yeah, perfect, great. Um, the Beekman Road project, this is a federally funded highway improvement project. This project goes from the Taconic State Parkway along Beekman Road all the way up to Sylvan Lake Road. So, um... A small portion of it, I guess, is in East, East Fishkill. Um, basically, I think you guys go almost up to the St. Dennis Church.
That's right, that's it.
Right past the cemetery, basically, so, so, yeah, you, you, yeah, your, your section of it is relatively small. Beekman is, is mostly in Beekman, but obviously your community is impacted. So the, we are um, seeking our final approvals from the state of New York and the Federal Highway Administration, who have to give us those approvals because they're giving funding. Not the UN. Um, but, um, we expect to have those final approvals by the end of September.
Okay.
Uh, we will go out to bid on this job also in the November timeframe. Kind of the same process. We intend to open bids over the winter, award the contract, and then the contractor will start. I think we're going to have the contractor start on this, on the Beekman Road project in February, early. And we have to do that because we have a lot of trees to take down. And if you're not aware, maybe you are aware with the Indiana bat and the other endangered bat species.
It'll be done by March.
You have to take all the trees down by the end of March. So we, we give the contractor a month basically to go through the corridor, drop all the trees. Um, and then they can come back and do all the other work over the course. We think this project will also take one construction season.
Okay.
Uh, there aren't any new bridges, there aren't any new major culverts or structures. They'll be replacing drainage pipes, wa- uh, adding shoulders. There are some curve realignments, although those are predominantly in the Beekman side of the project. But there will be shifts in the road, some shoulder widening, um, raising and lowering the gro- road to make better grades, um, things like that. So, um, it's, it's gonna be a comprehensive road project. And then, of course, all new paving, new signage, um, and the likes. So, um, that's sort of the long and short on that job. We've had, over the course of the ten, ten years, twelve years that we've been working on this project, we've had, I think, two or three public information meetings here in the town.
Okay.
Um, and uh, you know, we've answered a lot of questions over the years. And I think the question now has been, when are you doing the job? You know, we've talked, we've been talking about it for about five or six years here, here at the town, at the town information meetings. We're acquiring a, a decent amount of property. I think on this project, there are between fifty and sixty parcels of property that we're acquiring right away from. Typically, there, there are strips along the frontage. Um, some of them are temporary easements where we give the property back. Some of them are permanent easements where they retain ownership, but we've, we've needed the project to build something on or rearrange some side areas. Um, and then there are plenty of fee acquisitions, which means we physically purchase the property and it becomes government property. Um, and there are plenty of those on this job too. Some properties have a strip where we're purchasing it in fee and we own it. And then alongside that strip, there might be a temporary or permanent easement where we have to do some ancillary work to blend it all back in. Um, some pro- some properties have both types of acquisitions on them.
Easements take a long time, we know.
They do, they've taken years. Yeah, we've been, we've been two or three years, four, four years. Yeah, there, there's, they can be slow going. That's, and again, as we, uh, we are, like I said, we're getting final approval in September. Uh, once those plans are final approved, I will have a copy sent to the town. You can make them available to your residents.
Yes, absolutely.
And if you wish to post them on the website. Again, it'll be a stack of drawings this thick. I don't know how that will go on the website. Um, but, um, they're available at our office for people to look at. We'll give you a set. They'll be available for your residents here to come look at. Um, and if there's any other information or questions as, as things come up, I'll be more than happy to answer, answer questions on that too.
Great.
So you said you're gonna start February, March?
February, so they get all the trees down before the end of March.
And we're talking, this is a four, six-month project?
This is probably gonna be from March to like November. So this is probably like eight or nine months. This is a, this is...
The other project's on the other road.
The Phil- the Phillips Road Bridge.
Is gonna go at the same time?
Well, it'll go at the same time, yeah, yeah.
Wanna live in that area, Bucky, what about you?
Yeah. The Beekman Road will... Yeah, Beekman Road will stay open throughout the course of the project. There'll be one way, one lane alternating traffic in, in certain areas where they have to realign the road and stuff like that. But the Beekman Road will be accessible at all times.
So the work you're, you're gonna be doing will start from Carpenter Road going toward Sylvan Lake?
It'll start, it'll start at the Parkway and move north up to Sylvan Lake Road.
So nothing will be done prior toward Carpenter Road?
No, no, right by the eight, right by Taconic?
Yes, yes, yes.
Going west?
Correct.
Right.
There is a sharp turn over there, I don't know.
I'm sorry, going east. Right, going east towards Sylvan Lake.
Right.
There is a sharp turn over there. I don't know if you guys have ever considered doing something. We've had a lot of accidents over there.
Augusta over there?
Oh, the other way.
By Carpenter Road going toward the Parkway.
You're in clove branch.
That's on the other side of the park. On, uh, yeah, I mean, thi- this particular project isn't, isn't...
Is the other direction.
Is not working out.
We're just...
Yeah, they did, Dutchess County Planning did a whole study out there, Scott. And, and the highway superintendent, Mr. Williams, were out there for it. They did a safety assessment, right?
You guys have done some work in that area, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Changing the lights and some sign.
Yeah, we, we put up a, we're in the process of completing a brand-new traffic signal project at, at Beekman Road and Carpenter.
Right. Can we possibly do something about that uh, no-turn s- uh, sign on Beekman Road? I know that some constituents have had some questions.
Which, which intersection?
There's a lot of traffic buildup at that light right now. And if people could make a right turn onto Carpenter Road.
Oh, yeah, you know...
And then be stuck at the light.
I think we, I think we looked at that, that's at the new signal you're talking about. I think we, we looked at that with our consultants and, and we made a conscious decision about what the lane configurations had to be there. Um, I don't, I don't think that there was enough room to put a second lane in, like a separate right turn lane. Um, I don't know if it's a sign that says just no right turns.
No right turn or right.
That what it says? It might be because when people come east on Carpenter to that intersection, when you're going, trying to go right off of Beekman, you may not be able to see well enough up the hill to know when there's a car coming. Yeah, it's a sight distance thing that we don't like to encourage people to make that right turn unless you have a very clear view of everybody coming in every direction. Because you say, oh, I can go right, I'm gonna go right. And all of a sudden, you didn't stop and look to make sure there wasn't somebody zipping down Carpenter Road on you. Um, if you can't see that car very well, it's very dangerous to allow that turn.
I, I go down that road all the time. Uh, that special intersection over there because of the bump in the road, that's extremely dangerous.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys wanna even consider leveling something off. I don't know why that hump was created.
Clove branch, clove branch on eighty-two? Yeah, you're talking about eighty-two?
Beekman Road and Carpenter.
Oh, yeah, it's, it is, it does the same thing a little bit. It's not as bad as eighty-two.
That's very dangerous over there.
It's not as bad as the eighty-two hump, but it, it is a little bit of a hump. That's be- just because of the way the, the two road beds are graded. Um, just, just, yeah, just the way they, they come together. It's hard to, it, it would be extremely disruptive to flatten that out and try to...
So that's not something that...
You really just gotta wedge it up though. I mean, you could wedge up clove branch to nearly match.
We have no plans to do that right now. Well, you know, it affects, it's a drainage...
It is, it is one heck of a hump on eighty-two.
It is, it affects drainage, it affects the way the transition, the pavement transitions between the two roads. It, it sounds simple to just put a little pavement in there and smooth it out. It doesn't work that way on drainage. And the drainage would be, would be a challenge. Um, so, all we're doing at that location is just replacing the outdated traffic signal equipment. That, that, that's the scope of that job there at this point.
Okay. Um, is there anything else you wanted to, you wanna touch on? It was a concern, I had a lot of concerns of people, um, on, since you're at that Beekman intersection anyway, in Phillips Road.
Yeah.
People make that illegal left there.
Yeah.
And I know that the, the county had a concern about that and there was residents who had concerns about that. What is, is there any solution to this?
So, yeah, so, um, thank you for bringing that up. So, at the, as far as Phillips Road and, and the intersection of Beekman Road, we have a proposed uh, treatment in the, in the Beekman Road project, the ma- the big project, where we would physically restrict left turns coming out of Phillips or coming into Phillips. Um, because that traffic, it's just a dangerous spot to be making left turn.
Yeah, it's very dangerous. Our police department's out there constantly and...
Yeah, yeah. So, um, what, what we would like to do, what we would propose to do is sort of a, a sort of a fail-safe answer to that, would be to make Phillips Road basically one, that, that section of Phillips Road from Beekman Road to Noah, make that one way heading south.
Okay.
So nobody would be coming...
Make a right in and go south off of Beekman.
Right, in fact, if we, if we, if we made it a right, if we made it one way going south, we could revisit the, the top of, you know, the, the north end of Phillips Road because then there essentially would be nobody coming out, making a left, because you couldn't go that way really. But we think the, the best answer is if we were to tee up Phillips Road at Noah Way, make it a proper tee. And in fact, I, um, if you look, yeah, if you look at the color, the color print I gave you, um, the highlighted yellow area is actually the deeded, where the deeded road bed is. You can see where Phillips Road currently goes now. It kind of swoops to the south and it kind of merges in with Noah. We would propose to sort of make that more teed up into a conventional intersection so, so people could come out of Phillips Road heading south. This is basically going south. And they could go left easily on Noah or they could go right easily on Noah. As it stands today, you can't necessarily go left on Noah.
So you make it perpendicular there with Walnut?
Yeah, Walnut, exactly, right. We would, we would tee it up along with Walnut, so it'd almost act like a kind of a little four-way intersection.
Right.
Although I can't imagine that Walnut gets much use by the, except maybe by the few houses there, but...
It'll look good.
Yeah, it would, it would look good, it would make more sense, and it would put the roadbed on that actual slice of property that was sort of identified for the roadbed. So, that would be the proposal, and then, and then if we did that, the, in order to make it so people aren't heading back north up Noah, we would, I, I think, I gave you a, another plan of, this is just a concept plan, so, I don't want anybody to get too hung up about where stop signs and all that jazz are yet, this is a concept plan, but what we would do is we would basically tee up the intersection, we would remove, that's what the stippled area is, was remove that roadway area, the old one, and we would hatch off that lane that would normally lead up into Phillips, and put an, you know, like a no-enter sign there, and we don't wanna, we're thinking we would pave it like a regular road and just paint it hatched, so that fire and rescue would have no problem either going, you know, right into or left into Noah in that direction without causing problem, because obviously, we don't wanna restrict emergency access up, up this road.
Right.
But we just wanna discourage cars from going up that road, so, that, that's, again, it's a proposal, we think this, we think this could make sense, but it's a town road, it's your road collectively, your roads.
But it does meet at a, bless you.
Bless you.
It does meet at a county road which there is a traffic problem at.
There, correct, correct, and we think this would be a more effective solution, because as, as, Lon, Lon, are you a police officer, I'm sorry?
He's our chief.
Yep, pretty much. So, yeah, so, obviously, when people come up to Phillips Road, they come up to Beekman, there's a sign that says no left turn, so what do you do? Kind of look and make sure there's no cop cars, and you go left, right, and, and maybe you don't get hit by a car, and maybe you do, so, the sign itself, obviously, isn't, isn't anything that prevents people from doing that.
Doesn't work, right, yes.
We think that the do-not-enter for people traveling north up at this point, at, at the Noah Way side, that would be more effective at stopping people from getting to Beekman Road and then making the illegal left.
Right, our deputy supervisor, he's got many tickets there, so, maybe you can propose, you could come back and give us a full proposal if you would like?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be more than happy to add a little bit more detail, I'd like to talk with you.
Absolutely.
About what you, kind of what you'd like to see, and Scott, you've been, we've been chatting over the years, but I'd like, yeah, I'd like to kind of maybe sit down with you and just kind of get your ideas on how you think it might work best.
And maybe then, yeah, then I guess if you could talk to the engineer and the highway superintendent.
Yep.
And come up with, come up with the proposed plan.
Yeah, that'd be good, I think that'd be helpful, get it, so you're, what, it needs to be what you need it to be, before we kind of just throw it out there.
And possibly you can have a maintenance agreement for Noah Way, you could plow that and...
And take care of it. Who knows?
Shield services.
We would also, we would also, you know, in...
Remember, they're gonna want some...
I don't wanna hear that word when it comes to that.
And, and, in addition to, you know, just trying to make it so people couldn't come in, i- if, if this moves forward, we would suggest, too, that we would like to ask you to consider some speed kind of traffic calming, because Phillips Road, if, if it becomes one-way essentially, just going southbound, it's, it's like an eighteen-to-twenty-foot pavement.
Right.
And if that's one-way, that feels real good doing about sixty or seventy.
Yeah, right. I grew up in Stormville, I used to think that as a kid.
Yeah, yeah, you're the reason, so, so, we, we would, we would, and if we're gonna make it a one-way and we're gonna leave it that, sort of that wide two-way road.
Right.
We would probably, you know, ask you to consider, and we would put part of the proposal in, in speaking with you.
Yeah, narrow it out.
Maybe, like, every, yeah, exactly, every, every now and again, maybe put a neck down to kind of just kind of keep the greenway compact.
But you could double, double stripe it yellow, too.
What's that?
Double stripe it.
Yeah, yeah, you could put a double yellow on each side.
Put a double yellow down the middle.
And just kind of narrow it, and just make it a lane.
Typically, people shouldn't be crossing it yellow regardless.
Yep, that's true, that's true. Yep, yep, there are lots of traffic calming ideas, and again, because we just wanna make sure you can maintain it or whatever.
Only thing you may wanna consider in that hatched area at Noah and Phillips Ways, maybe go with a raised or a mounted curb.
Yeah, like, yeah, like a mountable curb, which is more, it, it's even more...
More of a discouragement.
A discouragement than just the striping.
Right.
And the mountable curbs is...
Because even striping fades, too, after a while.
Yeah, true, and, and if you keep the mountable curb low and gradual, the fire trucks can generally get over it fairly easily.
Exactly, like you do in the medians at eighty-four.
Exactly, exactly.
So, you're thinking from Noah Way...
It does talk about reducing speed, yeah.
Will end, it will not go back out to Beekman Road, or where Noah Way and Phillips Road hit, it will not, it's one, one way.
It'll be a one-way in the other way.
Yeah, right, when you, right, when you, when you come north on Noah Way, instead of going to the Parkway going Phillips, you would go to the signal and then make the left at the signal, which is...
The left, it'll be one-way from Beekman all the way to Noah.
Correct, yeah, heading in that direction, yeah, correct, exactly, yep, yep.
Okay, so why don't you put something together, and then we can have another discussion there?
Absolutely.
You get on one-way, and it'll stay there.
All right.
Anything else wrong here? Quickly while you're here, I just wanna thank you for all the work you did on Hillside Lake Road over there.
Oh, beautiful, looks, yeah, much, much better feeling, right? You got a shoulder now, instead of like, off into the ditch. Yeah, the drainage got better, and the shoulders certainly got better.
Looks really nice.
And you started getting messages from the residents out there who were initially complaining.
Oh, good, good, good. Every now and then we get one of those.
As the county, we're discussing maybe some school, uh, speed reduction in some certain school zones, has the county looked at maybe reducing due to Van Wyck right there in that proximity? Because to your point, now that you don't have that ditch, people are gonna maybe move a little quicker or wanna travel through there quicker.
I think, you're talking like an actual speed limit reduction, or...
Yes, at the school.
So, basically, you're, you control your fate, to a certain degree, in order to reduce a speed limit anywhere except in a village proper, the, your town board has to pass a resolution, I, if you haven't done it before, I can give you the forms.
We have.
You have, so you know the process, you pass a resolution, you send it to us, we generally say, yes, we agree, and then we send it to the state, the state ultimately decides what the speed limit is, so, but we would support that if you were to do that resolution.
Okay, great, yep, perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the comments for the commissioner? No?
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
And the last thing I'd like to mention is, today in the hamlet, we had a little water snafu, but it was averted, because we have been very diligent trying to combine our water systems together to have redundancy, would the engineer like to give us a little, uh, quick synopsis of what happened today?
Around nine AM this morning, we had a report of no pressure, a low pressure in the hamlet, what had happened is we had a, our fire pump in the hamlet treatment facility, a seal leaked, and because of the nature to leak, it was allowing the system to draw air, and there's booster pumps right adjacent to it, so what had happened is, under a demand, it drew air and it lost prime, that led to the hydro tank, which keeps pressure in the system draining very quickly, it's only a five-thousand-gallon tank, so the, the loss was very, very quickly. In the beginning, we were trying to troubleshoot, we didn't know if we had a break, we didn't know exactly, you know, what the problem was, controls, so it took a little while to, to get arms around that, through some troubleshooting, we had an increase, we were able to start building up pressure by throttling down the suction line, but it took a little while to get that straight, I know we had to have a, a school closed down as a result precautionary, because we just didn't have our arms around it in enough time to avert that, we still have the problem with the fire pump, but fortunately, we just got approved by the health department, our interconnection with Hopewell Glen, which ties into the county, so while that was already going on, we were already beginning the process of opening valves, flushing lines to get that online, which took us about two hours to get that online, and fortunately, you know, we still have this problem with the fire pump, but right now, we are running off the county, so we, we reached out to the county, got an emergency approval to, to make the switch, once we switched over, we attempted to take the fire pump apart and, and correct that problem, it's better, but it's not, I wouldn't say that it's a hundred percent just yet, so we're still on the county at this point, until maybe next week, we can make some other adjustment to, to go back live on our system, so, we, we were very fortunate that we'd had that interconnection, and to kind of give you an idea of magnitude, we run about forty-five thousand gallons a day here, you know, at the hamlet, six-thousand-gallon tanker, you know, you're looking at, you know, eight loads, nine loads, you know, five-hundred dollars a pop, so you could be looking at, you know, forty-five hundred dollars a day to trucking and water, if we didn't have this other connection.
Right.
So, that's the importance of having redundancy, that you can just open a valve, because if we didn't have this and our system's down, we're trucking in water for a month, it's a lot, a lot of money.
Yeah, and that's our plan, like, we've discussed many, many, at many, many meetings, how we're trying to expand our water supplies and redundancies and tie everything together, because then when one system's down, the other system could feed it.
The way this actually works and the way we designed it is, I mean, today, we did everything manually, but the way it works is if we have a break at midnight or New Year's Eve, all this will just happen automatically, I mean, we'll get alarms, we won't have to open valves, it'll all happen automatically, it's just, we just got this system online, like, literally last, last week, trying to get this approved by the health department that we could, that we could operate.
Right.
But in the future, once we worked the little bugs out that we still have, this'll just happen automatically.
Right, and thank you to the health department, you never, rarely hear that from me, but thank you to the health department.
The health department, again, the health department, the county, Westwood Authority, Joint Water Board, everybody cooperating, getting a, a quick response and approval to make the switch.
Yeah, great, and thanks to our staff here, to you and your staff.
Bill Monero, we're, we're superintendent.
Bill Monero, thank you very much.
BRI, our operator, everybody responded very well.
They did a great job today, so thank you.